I would like to call this regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order.
It is Tuesday, April 14th. A little bit after 5:30. We appreciate the public's patience as we work through our first regular virtual meeting. Attendance at this meeting will be strictly limited to no more than 10 people. As you can see, we have a rather skeleton crew up here. Most of the board members will be participating online. We are limiting the numbers in the boardroom itself to no more than 10 people, which is the current recommendation by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The general public does have the option to view remotely via live stream on Roku, Apple TV, and online at nhcsTV.wordpress.com. And I would like to welcome everyone that is tuning in online. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute. Oh, sorry, excuse me. I would like to call the roll. Ms. Adams?
Here.
Lisa Easton?
Here.
David Portman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams?
Here.
Nelson Bullier?
Here.
Judy Justice?
Here.
Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Ridenbark?
Here.
All right, thank you. I think we'll go ahead and have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay. So if we could all please stand and have a moment of reflection. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will now go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-311A, A1, A3, and A6. To consider personnel matters and prevent the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under General Statutes 115C-319 through 321, and to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including the case captioned "The Hanover County Board of Education versus Stein in the Supreme Court of North Carolina, Case Number 39A18." Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move for closed session pursuant to statute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Can we do another roll call then? Thank you.
Lisa Easton?
Here.
David Portman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams?
Here.
Nelson Bullier?
Here.
Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Ridenbark? Here.
All right, great, thank you. And hopefully, the public is back with us as well. I would now like to solicit a motion for approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
What second?
Was that, who was the second?
Jeanette.
Jeanette?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Nichols was the second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes from February 4th. We did have a revision. Hopefully, you all had a chance to take a look at that. Is there a motion to approve those revised meeting minutes from February 4th?
Move for approval.
Move for approval. Jeanette.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Nelson, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? They are approved. Next, we have the regular meeting minutes from March 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
A moved.
Set. Judy Justice, Ms. Justice, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ridenbark is the second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? They are approved. Inter meeting minutes from March 17th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Bullier is the, is the first. Is there a second?
Second.
Who is the second?
Either Stephanie or Judy.
Either one.
All right, we'll give it to Ms. Adams this time. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the call to the audience portion. And we are obviously going to be doing this a little bit differently today. Due to the CDC requirement to social distance and the requirement to hold meetings with 10 or less participants, a process has been put into place so that citizens may participate in the call to the audience portion of the meeting. Comments will be pre-recorded for remote meetings. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the community is reminded that each speaker is limited to three minutes, and comments shall not be slanderous or personal in nature. We had two individuals from the community record comments, and we will play them at this time. The first individual was Clyde Edgerton.
Yes, my name is Clyde Edgerton. I teach at UNCW and have children in New Hanover schools. Thank you, Board, for all you're doing to keep students, teachers, and employees safe during this stressful time. In December 2018, almost a year and a half ago, I and other parents and citizens asked the present Board to investigate six specific cases regarding sexual abuse and racial discrimination and intimidation in the New Hanover County schools. You had the power, as I understand it, to initiate such an investigation. You declined, in part, or perhaps wholly, because you were advised against doing so, against investigating, advised by people who have now left the school system or have been paid in a separation agreement. Those people were directly involved in all six cases, at least some of those people, and in some cases, all. Their departures and the circumstances surrounding those departures have created a lack of public trust in our school board, and the circumstances surrounding those departures will likely be discussed and uncovered for years to come. The FBI is now investigating several of the cases you declined to investigate. After at least 20 years of continued school board denials of unethical administrative behavior, the tide may be turning. This is a request that you investigate the first two of the six cases mentioned above. They involve deceit, conspiracy, and cover-up. People who were harmed deserve remedy. If you have read the facts regarding those cases, and I assume you all have, you are aware of what needs to be done. Thank you.
All right, the next individual that signed up is Dante Murphy.
My name is Reverend Dante Murphy. I'm representing a movement called the Southern Coalition for Equal Protections under the law. I have followed revelations about misconduct, corruption, and cover-up in the New Hanover County schools. The school board itself has thus far apparently avoided direct criminal charges. If the board is, if the board in its secret agreement with Tim Markley has offered to protect him from suspicious or unethical behavior, then the board has further involved itself in unscrupulous behavior. If the members of the board wish to respond to me during the call to the audience that they have in the past against their own policy regarding dialogue with the audience, my phone number is 704-300-7509. I want to also make the public aware that I have been served with a notice of appearance letting me know that Harrington Smith has been hired by the school board to defend you all in the illegal activity of intimidation during public comment, which is a serious infringement on free speech. Thank you, and I thank you for this time.
All right, that is all that we have for calls to the audience at this time. Moving on to Head Start, Head Start Board Liaison Report. Mr. Bullier?
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be doing this with my cellphone tonight, so just bear with me. After I give you the monthly report, I do want to share with the community some of the wonderful things that Director Smiles and her team have been doing to connect with our youngest students in the county and trying to navigate this crisis. So just bear with me for one second. Well, here we go. For the month of April, we have the same enrollment numbers we had last month, 213 three-year-olds, 147 four-year-olds. Or if you go to Appendix B, can they see this at home? Okay. Yeah, if you go to the next appendix, a list of our expenditures, again, every month, my reminder that what you are seeing is a month in the rear, so while it looks like we might be low, we are coming in right where we need to come in for all of our expenditure goals. This month, just a couple of small highlights. Let's see here, hold on. Okay, we have collected 391 applications for next year. Forty-two families have reached out for interest. We now have an online application live on our website for families to complete and submit for next year. So if you have a child, three to four, please feel free to do that. 65% of families are participating in Ready Rosie, which is a parent and child engagement program. 4,735 learning opportunities have been taken by New Hanover County families, such as brushing your teeth with your family, or how to make a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Directions and lots of interactions with language are available for all of these programs. Ready Rosie is also sound in Spanish. All videos that we are distributing are available in Spanish. 3,000-plus points of contact, points of contact with families via the Family Contact Log. Bilingual family specialists are also reaching out to families and recording on our log. Google Classroom, Class Dojo, and other virtual learning tools have been launched in every preschool classroom. And two preschool centers are meal sites, that's Johnson Pre-K and Howe Pre-K, and I'm sure Dr. Burns will update on our incredible efforts throughout our county facilities. But, you know, these kids are difficult to reach remotely, and Ms. Smiles has recognized that, her team has recognized that, and we are making every effort to do everything we can for those small students. So thank you very much for the time, and I appreciate it. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the report. It appears that we have nothing under item six information, so we will move on to item seven, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. There are a number of items that I'd like to share with you, but I'll start this evening with the one that I think is the most amazing. The work that is being done by New Hanover County Schools' teachers. As we've discussed before, this is a time that is uncharted for us and other districts across the nation. I've been in a number of schools, I've talked with principals, I've had many conversations, and the work that is being done by teachers to reach out to their students, to prepare instructional resources for them, to follow up with them, is the same effort, in some cases even more, that has been demonstrated every day prior to this time where students are not in the building. And I think it is truly remarkable. It speaks to the dedication, the commitment, the knowledge, the skills, the hard work of teachers, as they do what is necessary to maintain learning for their students and frankly to stay in touch with them. As Mr. Bullier just mentioned, access is a bit of a challenge, and teachers across the district are working very hard to connect with students, and I think that that is truly commendable. The work is going on, and frankly, I think that the students are very fortunate, the community is very fortunate, to have the teachers in this district working with the children in this community. I would like to share information from a number of different areas, and I'll start with the building level and with teachers and their hard work, principals as well, and other support staff members, assistant principals, counselors, social workers. Folks in the buildings are continuing to work as best they can to support teachers as they do their job every day. We launched remote learning for all students on April 1st. The first three days of the launch were designed to connect with families, to assess student accessibility, and orient students to new learning formats. It was during this time the district also worked to identify resources for teachers and families to support instruction. For the next two weeks, the district will focus on evaluating the effectiveness of remote learning, and we will be working to ensure that the critical factors for effective remote learning are being met. Remote learning is considered effective when it is accessible by all students for which the learning is intended, and is responsive to diverse learning groups, when it maintains consistent communication between instructional staff and students, when it addresses the curricular and instructional needs associated with appropriate standards, and when it includes evidence of student learning as well as considers the whole child in the home learning environment. Additionally, the district has information for families of graduating seniors. We're providing guidelines regarding graduation. This information has been made available electronically today and will be mailed to families no later than Monday, April 20th. The Technology Department has stepped up and deployed over 3,100 devices to students in the district. Employees in schools are doing everything they can to make sure that devices are in the hands of students who need them. I visited a school today. The principal was not in the building because she was out in the community personally delivering devices to some of her students. Our schools are still deploying devices and will continue to do so, so please let your school know if you know of a student who needs a device. We're also working on providing hotspots for students to provide access. We are looking to purchase many thousand hotspots that we can distribute to families that do not currently have Wi-Fi access. The area of student support has been working hard as well. Staff are being provided with resources and supports to maintain appropriate services and accommodations through remote learning plans for students with IEP and 104 plans. Access required for professional development within a virtual format has been provided, and since going remote, 600 additional staff members have accessed the online version of Stewards of Children Darkness to Light Training Module. We now have over 1,000 employees trained so far this school year. Student support has also maintained legislative and regulatory requirements for mandatory reporting and responsive measures for students experiencing abuse, neglect, trauma, and other adverse childhood experiences during this remote learning time. On April 3rd, in finance, we rolled out the emergency leave and mandatory work guidelines to all employees, which include the additional compensation for mandatory onsite work that was approved by the board at the last board meeting. State emergency leave will allow us to continue pay through the end of April for those employee groups for which remote options are not available, as well as COVID-19-related absences. The state has provided additional budget flexibility and $5,680, excuse me, $560,880 in additional funding to support unanticipated needs, including remote learning and school nutrition. We're in the process of determining how those funds will be budgeted, but expect most to be used to offset the reduced child nutrition revenue. We also expect federal stabilization funds to be allotted in the next few weeks, and each LEA is to receive the same proportion of funds as received under Title I. The Operations Division has been working very diligently. Most of the folks in operations are working remotely and with a reduced staff in order to maintain facilities, continue construction projects, and operate the curb-side grab-and-go meals program. The meal program is now open at 21 schools, and we have 50 bus drop-off locations. We're serving an average of 5,700 students a day. When the president invoked the Defense Production Act on March 18th that redirects all personal protective equipment items and other critical medical devices to health organizations, which includes cloth face masks, our purchasing department was working at the time with vendors to obtain masks, but orders have been placed on a waiting list. They're also working with the hospital to identify other vendors that may be able to provide masks sooner. At this time, we do not have any confirmed orders. In one of our schools, Ashley High School, teachers mobilized the use of 3D printers in order to print face shields and the frames for the face shields for this county's Emergency Operations Center. That is quite an admirable effort. The 15 printers have been working very diligently with the supportive staff so that we can help the county as they provide PPE equipment to necessary individuals. With our staff, however, we are working with the CDC guidelines, and we're providing all meal service employees, all bus drivers, and active school personnel with the necessary material to make simple cloth face masks. We sent instructions that came from the U.S. Surgeon General in the form of a video, that with the materials distributed this week, so that employees can use the materials and wear a personal face mask that they bring from home, or make a simple cloth face mask with the materials provided. We're having some issues with reordering of disinfectant wipes, cleaning products, and other critical supplies. Purchasing continues to work to find these items and provide them as quickly as possible. In the safety area, we're communicating regularly with the emergency management for updated information and to provide any needed assistance. Discussion and plans are also occurring to address the situation if the need arises for us to stand up shelters as we enter into the hurricane season during COVID-19. We're frequently communicating with our partners in law enforcement as they continue to watch over the well-being of students, staff, and our facilities. Communications has increased media and internal coverage of employee, student, and family stories related to COVID-19 changes. We have reinstated the monthly employee newsletter, Waves. We're working to develop strategic plans for partnership and volunteer program expansion. We're developing instructional programs for NHCS TV, and we're working to develop a remote town hall event in the future. Working with the North Carolina School Board Association, we're also seeking to increase the superintendent search surveys participation, which I believe Chair Eastep will address in just a few moments. You can understand that there is much going on, there's much effort, much commitment. We are focusing on safety first and meeting the needs of students through instruction, through meals, in any way that we can as a district. And there is much to be proud of. I frequently participate in phone conferences with other districts across the state, and hear superintendents discuss the things that are going on in their school systems. I am very proud to be a part of New Hanover County Schools during this time because of the effort that I have seen demonstrated to support the children and the community. Board members, there's one other item that I would like to share with you. As I have worked in the district now for approximately six weeks and looked at a number of processes and procedures, there's one that I would like to share with you that I believe can have quite an impact on the board meetings, the board operation, as we go forward. A few years ago, the district reviewed E-Board Solutions Application, ASIMLY, for use with the board agenda. And I have talked with the representative, I do have personal experience using this particular platform. The ASIMLY platform is used in over 1,400 school systems in the nation, and it is quite impressive. It is integrated in the sense that there are many functions that can be done using this particular platform. The agenda can be built, the minutes can be maintained, online voting is a feature of this. It is something that can be integrated into Zoom meetings, which is what caught my attention early on as we were trying to determine how we can use it for meetings. The platform is also useful not just for Board of Education meetings, but for staff meetings. There are modules that can be used for that. And so at this point, after talking with the vendor, I was informed that there's been a great demand for E-Board Solutions ASIMLY product, especially during the time of remote meetings across the country. And what I would like to come forward with is to move our platform, which you've used for a number of years, which I think has been adequate, to this particular platform. It's very similar. It will require some training, which we can do internally, but it would allow greater usefulness, more effectiveness for us going forward. The cost is not prohibitive. There is a subscription. It is $10,350 per year with a $1,000 initial setup fee. There are funds available in the budget to cover this, and I would share with you that this would be a change that I would like to make, and I'm not asking for a vote, I'm asking for any concerns that board members may have, for us to move to this platform so that we have greater flexibility, we have a deeper, more robust platform that can be used in many ways, not just by the board going forward. So I share that. If there's any concern, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Burns, would it be possible for us to get a virtual demo?
Good idea.
Of the platform to see what it looks like and how it works, and just to understand the functionality?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. There is a video that I can share with you, and we'll provide that to you. About a third of the districts in North Carolina, I think it's about a third, use ASIMLY. And frankly, I've had the opportunity, as I shared, to use it in many districts. The functionality is very useful, and the cost is not prohibitive, and given the broad use of it, I think it is well worth moving toward. We can share a video with you. What we would do is provide training. There'll be videos, I think board members would find it very intuitive to work through. And I would want to run a parallel for at least a board meeting after we move forward with this, so that we don't just flip the switch and have issues and provide training. So yes, we can provide the video. So yes, we can provide the video link to you, all board members. Thank you. That's a great question.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, concerns? We will send you that video link, and we will move forward, and I will keep you posted so that when we have two versions, we can look in both. Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you for that report. All right. Moving on to Item 8, Board Chairperson's Report. I would also like to echo Dr. Burns's words about the hard work that is being done, and just simply say thank you to everybody in the district for all the work that is being done. Everyone is adjusting on the fly. Every staff person, every employee, every teacher, every student, every parent. It's amazing to see the work that is being done. The community-based organizations that are partnering with us have been just crucial as well. So again, thank you to everyone. I don't really know what else to say other than that. We'll go on, and we'll keep moving through this semester and keep adjusting to what comes at us.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I've had several teachers call me in the last few days, and believe it or not, they want to get back in the schools.
Of course.
And I understand that 10 alarms went off at schools today. They would like to get back in, like for just an hour, one day, and go in and get supplies and go through things. If there's any way we can make that happen, I sure would appreciate it, because they would.
Mr. Reibenbach, I'd like to share some information, and thank you for providing that. We have established work hours in all facilities between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. for mandatory work. Work that is not mandatory requires folks to stay at home. However, there are exceptions that can be granted by principals for employees who are not designated mandatory, meaning they are required to be in the building, to come into the building for short periods of time to run copies, to get information, or materials, or personal effects that they wish to take back home. And so, if you receive requests, please encourage them to speak with their principals, to arrange a time between 10:00 and 2:00 for them to go into the buildings.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for that. I just want to talk about three quick items. First is the superintendent search. We do have surveys up online. We have a staff survey that is available on the staff portal. We've had over 400 staff respond to that survey. We would love to get more, and we will be putting out an email just to remind staff members to make sure to fill out that survey. We also have a community survey. We haven't had quite as strong of a response to that. We have that survey available in English and Spanish. We will be promoting that survey this week on our social media sites. We will be promoting that in English and Spanish, so we certainly hope that the community will take that, take this opportunity to provide that feedback. It is very valued, and we would love to hear from members of the community. So please, as your home, fill out the survey, send it back in. We are gathering that data. Second is, we initially had an interim meeting scheduled for next week on the 21st. We do not need that meeting at this time, but we would like to schedule a policy meeting. And Ms. Nichols and Mr. Reibenbach, if it is okay with you, would like to schedule it possibly sometime in the morning due to Ms. Stagner's schedule. So I'm hoping that maybe 10 to 12, if that works for you all, we would schedule a policy committee meeting, and then going forward, we would be scheduling a meeting every month.
And what date is that?
The 21st. We were initially going to be having an interim meeting, but we will be having a policy meeting instead.
Okay.
Yes, that works fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. The last thing that I have is, we, as everyone on the board knows, we have an appointment, one appointment every year to the Cape York Community College Board of Trustees. That appointment is coming up. The current trustee, Mr. John Amelia, is not seeking reappointment. We do thank him for his service on that board, but we will be advertising for that opening, you know, for that position. So after today, we will be posting that advertisement, and I just wanted to let the public know that that opening will be coming available, and we hope to get a lot of applicants. That's a great board to be a part of, a great voice to have in the community, and a very important position. Our community college serves a wonderful purpose in this community, so we certainly hope to get a wide range of interest there. So that is all I have for the Board Chairperson's Report. Do we have any committee reports at this time? No? Okay. Moving on to consensus items. Item A, Personnel, Dr. Burns.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I present for your consideration this evening the Personnel Report.
So we will, is there a motion to approve contract of Assistant Superintendent Eddie Anderson for the effective date 7/1/2020 to 6/31/2021?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Is there a motion to approve Assistant Superintendent Contract for LaShawn Smith for the effective date 7/1/2020 to 6/30/2021?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Reibenbach's the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Six to one. There is, all the other administrative contracts are for the effective date 7/1/2020 to 6/30/2024, and if it pleases the board, we will take those. The rest of the personnel items as a whole. Is there a motion to approve those as presented?
Move to approve.
Second.
The second, Ms. Adams?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? They are approved. Moving on to Budget Amendments. Mary Hazel Small?
Thank you. I request the board approval of Budget Amendment, Capital Outlay Budget Amendment Number 5. It's $194,000 for a project for Murray Solar Panels, and the funding is coming from energy rebates from Duke Energy, and that revenue is based on projects we've done in the past that they gave us rebates for. So we want to put that back into the same purpose.
All right. You've heard the request. Is there a motion to approve the Budget Amendment presented by Ms. Small?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. So there's a motion by Ms. Justice and a second by Ms. Nichols? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you. Item Number 12, New Business. Item A, COVID-19 Extra Duty Teacher Stipend, Dr. Burns?
Madam Chair, are we at the School Board Policy?
Whoops, did I miss?
Yep.
I did miss. So sorry. I skipped a whole section. Excuse me. Let me back up. Moving back to Item 11, Old Business. Item A, NCSBA Policy Services, Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. On February 4th, 2020, the board approved contracting with the North Carolina School Board Association for the custom manual project with policy services. For this service, there is a one-time fee of $29,900 divided into three equal payments. The services were to begin in July. This evening, I am recommending that we revise the current contract to include a start date of April 15th tomorrow. Funding is available at the current budget to pay the fee plus additional costs and services not to exceed $35,000 in total. This will allow the School Board Association to have three policies ready for discussion by the Board Policy Committee on April 21st.
All right. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to revise the contract and accept the recommendation?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Reibenbach?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item B, 2021 Budget Request, Ms. Small?
Madam Chair, members of the board, at the last meeting, I shared with you my revised recommendation for the Board of Education budget for the coming fiscal year, 2020, 2021. The revision is that we request of the county and that you consider a flat funding in the same amount that is currently provided this year, $85,550,372. Based on the current economic climate and the potential for lower revenue at the state and the local level, this is a prudent action, and we, I did not ask you to consider it at the last meeting. This evening, I provide that as a recommendation to you for your consideration. We would look at the operating budget as flat funding for this year and the capital outlay budget the same. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, or Ms. Small can respond.
Are there any questions?
One point I would like to make, members of the board, in order to maintain flat funding is going to require reductions. There are legislated costs that we anticipate. There are program continuity costs that we anticipate. Any new initiatives we eliminated early on. The total of the legislative requirements, as we understand them now, and of the program continuity, which primarily is opening a new school, equals approximately $2.6 million. In order to maintain the budget with flat funding, we'll have to reduce other areas because we will have to absorb those costs going forward. There is a chance that if the state revises some of the projections for salary increases, for benefit increases, we can lower that amount some, but there'll still be a significant amount of reduction necessary. If you approve this evening, this recommendation, and send it forward to the county, we will bring to you next month, in May, the recommendation for the reductions for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the request?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Justice is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Small.
All right. Now, moving on to New Business. Item A, COVID-19 Extra Duty Teacher Stipend, Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Because teachers in New Hanover County Schools are working remotely at this time and will do so during the duration of the COVID-19 event, hiring a long-term substitute when a teacher is absent for a week or more is not feasible. This evening, I am recommending that for the duration of the COVID-19 event and teachers working remotely, that the Board of Education consider providing classroom teachers the following stipend when covering classes for teachers who are absent and who will be absent for extended periods of time of one week or more. Up to 10 students for the teacher covering for the other teacher, $100 per week as a stipend. If the teacher is covering 11 to 20 additional students, a stipend of $150 per week, and if the number is greater than 21 students, a stipend of $200 per week. We would ask principals to be able to approve two weeks or less for any leave longer than 10 days or two weeks. Principals must consult with Human Resources. I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have regarding this item.
Thank you for considering this.
Dr. Burns, I'm just curious, is this in response to this commit, is this an issue, or is this something you're anticipating is going to happen this spring, and just wanted to have it in place?
We have at present approximately 20 long-term subs. We will have more. We're aware of several cases where, due to maternity leave and other matters, that we'll have substitutes needed. For the new long-term substitutes, rather than bring someone in who does not know the students, this is the best thing for students. So there are some cases on the horizon, and in order to compensate employees for the extra work, which you have a practice currently in secondary schools, if a teacher is going to be out for a period of time, and another teacher chooses to use his or her planning period during the school day to cover a class and move their planning period to the end of the day, there is compensation provided. This is parallel to that practice, and I do believe it is the right thing to do for employees.
Great. Thank you.
And budget-wise, is it budget-neutral?
There should be little effect because we will not be paying for a substitute. It will be close. I can't say with certainty it will be budget-neutral once figuring in the benefits, but I do not think it's going to cost the district much in terms of additional funds.
I think it's a great idea. All right. So do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept the item as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Nichols is the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Item B, Consideration of Bids for CTEC High School Phase III Renovations, Eddie Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. CTEC, or CTEC High School Phase III Renovations, this project was included in the 2019-2020 capital budget. It's funded by a combination of state lottery funds and local funding. Generally, the project includes HVAC improvements, upgrades in technology, science classroom improvements, and the addition of some new classrooms within the current footprint of the building. Bids were received on February 18th of 2020. We received five bids, and tonight, we're recommending the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Team Construction. We recommend an award of the construction contract to Team Construction LLC in the amount of $1,058,500. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Have we worked with Team Construction before? I don't recognize the name.
No, we have not. And it was a new name for us as well, but we did check several references and specifically talked to other school systems and architects that had experience working with them. And we're looking forward to working with a new contractor.
All right. So the Board has heard the recommendation of Mr. Anderson to award the contract to Team Construction. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Second. Mr. Rivenbark? Any discussion? I'm sorry, was there a question? Nope. All right. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you. Item 13, Correspondence. Is there any correspondence? Any board member would like to share? Or anyone else, considering we only have a few people here now?
I've got something I want to say. I know that everybody's got some little something that they would like to get some money for. There's no money. There's just no money. We are going to be lucky to get by this year. Just hope and pray that the Board's going to help us. And, you know, we'll get through it. We'll be okay. But just know that we've just got to go through some tough times right now. That's all I got. A second.
Thank you, Mr. Rivenbark. All right. If there's no other correspondence, item 14, Announcements. We, as I said before, we were going to have an interim meeting, but now we will hold a policy meeting on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. The tentative time is 10 to 12 and that will be a virtual meeting. We will announce the definite time. The next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, May 4th, 2020 at 5:30 in the Board of Education Center right here. And I will now need a motion to go back into closed session. Do I need to read the same statutes?
I think you do, yes.
Okay. All right. So we will go back into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-31811, A1, A3, and A6. Under the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, to consider personnel matters and prevent the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under General Statutes 115-C-319 through 321, and to consult with the Board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including the case captioned "New Hanover County Board of Education versus Stein in the Supreme Court of North Carolina," case number 339A18. Is there a motion?
Move to closed session pursuant to the General Statutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We're all seconding.
Right. Who was the, who was the second?
Not me.
I got it first. Not that it's a competition.
Ms. Justice was the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are back in closed session. More item. At 3:30 this afternoon, the Board held a hearing on the Deputy Superintendent, I'm sorry, on the interim Superintendent's recommendation for the dismissal of Allison Wooton as a career teacher. Board members Judy Justice, Nelson Bullier, Bill Rivenbark, and Board Chair Lisa Eastet and myself were present and heard evidence at the hearing. The Board members who were present will vote on the following motion. To accept the interim Superintendent's recommendation for Allison Wooton's dismissal pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115-C-325-E on the grounds of inadequate performance, insubordination, neglect of duty, and failure to fulfill the duties and responsibilities imposed upon teachers by the law of North Carolina. Will one of the Board members present at the hearing make a motion to approve these findings?
Move to approve the findings of the Superintendent.
Is there a second? I will second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. That is all the business we have for today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Judy.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Justice. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.